Before we get stuck on agenda that Clark saw, there are a couple of papers on the agenda that we opened up probably to some action long, brought to have a public comment period come around. Papers number to be continued, private committee papers who were free, Mr. Powers, who was patron of those, that paper was built in the board session. We had a meeting scheduled and then followed from February 7th. My opinion is February 7th. Yeah, February 7th.
The meeting for January 31st is about our council.
Okay. So, February 7th, February 7th.
February 7th, from 2:30 to 4:30 on the left floor, conference room, on the left floor.
What is that?
That day is the actual date, but please it's a Tuesday, Tuesday, February 7th.
Thank you. Two o'clock to four?
2:30 to 4:30 on the left floor, and procurement wise conference room.
So, that may will be continued, and also, the attorney's office has requested that we continue paper number nine as well, because they are still working with EDU to get some new clarification, and especially this is a paper in which the transportation, EDU is requesting that it should serve on the advisory boards for radio and public transportation, so just still working through some details on that, and ask for the continued. We have a motion, Mr. Toward.
What's up, man?
The motion, probably second to the number three, and number nine, which is not, that I'm heard for that, the public comment period.
Okay. We now have public comment period. Are there any persons here that would like to address the committee on any matters not related to any items on this evening's agenda? Seeing that public comment period is now closed, which I have to do approval of minutes. You will now have to approve of the minutes for Thursday, November 17th, Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Sure.
Okay, and now voting to approve those minutes, all in favor. No minutes have been approved.
Next item on the agenda is any committee staff.
Thank you. Corrie Jones, council staff with the staff report for the Finance and Economic Development Committee Committee for January 2012. Our follow-up items are, starting with compliance report, the following required reports are due to the committee and have not yet been received, and that would be the semi-annual commercial loan program report, as well as semi-annual community development loan program report. Attached on page four of your supplemental package information is the fiscal year 2012 listing of all required reports. The items that you see that are highlighted in the range are those that are due to the committee by before the next meeting. Debt policy, members of the Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, council staff, and the administration met with the city financial consultants from DAPOR Company, LLC regarding the city's debt policy. DAPOR presented committee members and staff to listen for recommended revisions to the city's current debt policy and provided justifications for those such revisions. Some of the policies that they have recommended changes on Monday include the debt payout ratio policy, the term of debt policy, debt capital versus income capital policy, unassigned fund balance policy, and reference table state fund policy. It was communicated to the committee members at that meeting that it is the administration's goal to introduce a paper containing those revisions at the city council meeting on Monday, which is January 23rd, 2012, with the paper being coming before this committee on February 16th, 2012. And lastly, the comprehensive annual financial report for CAFR, the presentation on 2011 CAFR will take place on Monday at the informal council meeting. And you should have in front of you a memo from Mr. Harris and our budget department through Mr. Marshall that depicts the responses to questions that you all had regarding the CAFR. So, if you have any additional questions to what you see here, please let me know as soon as possible, so that I can get those questions to the administration Monday before dinner. And that concludes my staff report. Thank you.
Questions? Mr. Toward.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you look at it through, we've talked about compliance reports and not incidentally one report, you had fourth quarter report. Now, I received the fourth quarter report last week, one day last week, by email. I don't, and I don't remember seeing recommendations for the year end fund balance. Was that attached to that?
Well, I think definitely to the recommendations for the year end fund balance. It's not anything that you will actually be receiving those from the CAFR presentation on Monday.
Okay, all right. So, we have not received?
Yes. That'll be limited with the CAFR discussion of those.
And I'd like to have that information with advance of the meeting. I'd like to have what the recommendations are. I don't want you to have that meeting. I'd like to have a little while to have an opportunity to get your form get had.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have in a reporting requirements to the committee, and I think we had some discussion on this previous day in committee, as has some discussion on this as well. I think previous day the committee has a lead that the reports that were due for the fourth quarter report did a highlighted green section that is due by the end of this month, that many of these reports, the other data that we're getting, that we're going to go to a six-month report. And we also asked for the February meeting, that we block out at least an hour for review of these reports, both the reports that were due to us in the first quarter and the second and second quarter reports, and use a block out an hour, in addition to the regular time of the meeting, for the purpose of reviewing those financial reports, okay? And we'll make sure that we send a message, communication to the administration to be clear as to what those reports consist of, inasmuch that the CAFR covers a significant amount of the fourth quarter report. And we did agree with the administration as a part of the CAFR report that they would make their recommendation as relates to the end of the year fund downs. That's what they expected to do as a part of that presentation to us. So, we would want to hold fast to that, but that's what we are expecting for that with the CAFR. I missed the first part. Sorry, you're saying that's what you're directing online, right? Doing that discussion? Yes, basically, the end of the year fund downs recommendations, and as a part of the CAFR report. But for the other reports that were due for the first and second quarter of this year, we will set aside an hour for review of those reports at the February meeting. That will include the loan program fund, the community development loan fund. It will also include the stop order report, that I think Mr. Dewey brought up some information the other day as relates to some of those kinds of fees that we had, and when we get those reports, we review those reports. It will include all of those items, or the minority business participation, and so forth as well. So, we will set aside an hour of the committee's time for review of those reports, and they should be a six-month report, okay, from the beginning of the FY year through December 31st. Okay? All right. And we can send out a communication to the administration and to the committee and even the entire council and the guards for that, so that we all know what we've asked for when we agree to the timeline of one of those reports. And I think to the extent that we ask for those reports within a time, I understand, Mr. Toward, that we'd like to see some things before, when we agree to with the administration on receiving those reports. I think as far as the committee is concerned, if we agree to a timeline, and that's when we expect to receive the information, then that's really what I think that we should hold ourselves accountable to. And many times, we don't get the reports in time, and so that certainly doesn't help. But so, if we want to send this communication out early, so that we understand exactly what we're doing in February, what we're pushing, and reviewing, and the time as well as we do. Okay? Any questions, or any other recommendations or comments that we need to make?
Yeah, Chair, I am fine with the fact that we put a timeline together. I think it's important for the administration to know what we're trying to achieve. I am concerned that I received the fourth quarter report last week from the administration. The fourth quarter ended June 31st, and have almost seven months of bad time. It is not acceptable, and I hope the administration understands that, in order for us to work together, that we've got to have this information in a timely fashion. So, I know we've had some change in the board and the finance department, but at the same time, it's critical for us to do our job, we've got to have this information.
And I appreciate that was spelled. I think that's where the same, any questions? Do you want to add?
No, I'm pulling my tongue.
All right. One of the things that I want to make clear is that when we make changes at the committee level as it relates to when we expect reports, I think it's going to be very important that we send out a deal to that effect, so we get all the rest of it. When we usually make changes, as to when we expect the information, okay? I know in the previous financial meeting, we voted on some of the reports that we asked to go on a formally basis, but we really don't, you know, we call the information on a formally basis, especially that first quarter, there's no information. And, well, if we change our mind, we change our mind, Mr. Toward, but we brought the subject up, we had extensive discussion about it, and we made a decision to go to this biannual reporting, some of these reports. So, if you want to change your mind, you can change your mind, but I just think that we need to be at least effective in our means of our communication as to what reports we expect, and when we're going to get those reports. When we made that change, we also agreed that we're going to set aside time specifically to review those first six months of reports at one time in the committee. And so, that's what I'm reiterating again, that for the next meeting, we're going to review all of these reports, Mr. Toward, that were requested, that were due throughout the first half of the year, they were a six-month report, and we will set aside time to review those reports. Okay? And we'll send out a memo to that effect, and if someone wants to change their mind about that, we need to let it be known, so that we can change this. All right? All right, with that, then we will move forward to the presentation. I am grateful to have with us Kellyanne Harrison, and the guru of budget for the entire state of Virginia First Cities, as well as Jim Reginald, to help us, to bring us some information as it relates to what's going on this year with the budget, the new assembly, and the impact that this is going to have, especially in the cities. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you so much, Madam President, Madam Chair, members of council, Madam clerk. It's so good to be here. Thank you so much for having us. We are very happy to be here. We had a couple of miscues, although we were supposed to be here a couple of months ago, but I think this is probably the best time for us to come, because we can talk about some of the contacts with the budget on Richmond, and we can talk a little bit more, you know, with a little bit more information. As Mrs. Robertson said, I'm here with Jim Reginald, who is our fiscal analyst, and he does work for a number of other organizations, but Virginia First Cities is his heart, and we're glad to have him with us. He does a great job in synthesizing information, policy analysis, and he's an excellent fiscal analyst economist. We're going to talk a little bit about how funding issues are affecting the city of Richmond in particular, and so we have created a presentation for you to that effect. Just want to let you know that Vice President Robertson invited us to come, and we're pleased to be here. She also sits on our executive committee and is a former president of Virginia First Cities, a chairperson of Virginia First Cities, so we just want to let you know. She's all that, and we're glad to be here. But Virginia First Cities advocates for policy change and funding for our members. That's what we do. We laser in to focus on the issues that are most important to our cities, and just examples like adverse education funding, street maintenance funding, police departments funding, revitalization efforts. We focus on all of those things, and policies that have to do with finance, and all kinds of things. So, that is our focus, and we have done a pretty good job over the last several years. Richmond is a charter member of Virginia First Cities, it started right here in Richmond in 1999, and we value your membership. I just want to mention that. And the last thing I wanted to mention is that Virginia First Cities also has a subcommittee recently of superintendents, so all of our members, the superintendents are also part of the subcommittee that works on education issues for our members. So, it's really been a very, very beneficial, we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go along. But we're going to do play a little tag team. Jim's going to start off, and I'll come back, and then he'll finish us out. Thank you.
Madam Chair, very much enjoyed it. Great to be here, good to see you again. This probably comes under the category of too much information, some of this stuff, so I apologize. Some of this stuff can probably go better than I do. The reason why we have these first few slides, and they're just to sort of set the context of how important the state is to the city of Richmond. You can see that you're kind of average in terms of how much revenue, total revenue you get from the state for your operations, about 30%. You have a little less local, a little more federal in your budget. This is for fiscal 10, that's the latest I have to do this. You also rely less on your real estate taxes, you have a more diverse revenue base, which I'm sure you're agreeing that that's good at these economic times. However, real estate is still an important revenue source for you, over 40%, and you can see you've got a real estate recession, and pulled these last couple of years, fiscal 12, 13, out of your budget. I hope they are right, correct me if they're not, but it looks like you're dipping pretty good.
I'll stop.
Okay, I'll stop there. The point is, obviously, locality is not just you, but all across the state, and you've got a real estate recession still. It's going to be the last thing that we recover from in what's happened, is because it was a real estate recession. Richmond does, I want to point out, your requirements compared to the rest of the state, you have to spend more on per capita basis on other things, and we've known that for a long time. That's one of the reasons Virginia First Cities was chartered, because the state really doesn't give as much assistance to these other areas, and you have to spend money on public safety, public works, health, and welfare, those kinds of things. So, you know, on a per capita basis, you do have to spend more in this city than the rest of the state. So, we try to focus in. Now, I'm going to start getting a little more of a context. The state has generated the funding that the state has provided to localities as follow over time. It picked up a little bit during the growth years, go forward to '08, but to resume this slide, it's probably going to accelerate even beyond that. So, the way you read this chart is categorically, back in 2000, statewide, over 33% of the programs were funded by the state. Now, they're 29%. You can see in Richmond, you are 30%, I've got these dots at the endpoints. Richmond was 30% in 2000, you're now, you know, just a little above 26% in terms of categorically for what they give to you. That doesn't include car tax, for example, reinforcements. Now, why is the state not going to be able to restore these cuts that particularly happened in the recession? Why are they not going to be able to restore them to localities and Richmond going forward, at least very fast? Well, first, revenues are not growing as fast as they usually have coming out of recessions. Look at this chart. You'll see the recessions in 1990, revenues pretty much almost got to 10%. The 2001 recession, even a little deeper, got up to over 10%. About five, revenue growth was about 10%. Add the tax increase that the governor, Werner, got through, adds another 5%. So, the economic side is about 10% growth, and then you go to this recession, '09, deeper, longer, we're only seeing 5% growth coming out of it. So, we're not able to fill those holes that were created from that recession with revenue growth like we were in the past. The next reason, also, we've also, still at the same point, we've also hurt our general fund regulatory base in the state of Virginia by reducing our tax base. And if you look at all the tax cuts that have occurred in recent years, even with the tax reforms in 2004, which increased the sales tax and the cigarette tax, and the recordation tax to the tune of almost $900 million a year, now, we still are $1 billion in the hole over a biennium from the tax cuts that have occurred around it, and those have accelerated actually in respect. So, during the good times, we were basically reducing our general fund tax base. Some of it are pure reductions, like sales tax on food, estate tax repeal, others, we've shifted some of our funding to help solve our transportation problem, and you can see that at the very bottom, the governor has again proposed $110 million over the biennium of general fund sales tax to be used for transportation purposes to help solve that problem. We don't want to raise our transportation tax revenues, we want to use general funds for that, it's a little easier, you know, than raising gas tax things. We have to fill the hole, part of the problem during recession, we kept our operating base higher than it would have normally been if we would have fully funded the retirement system. So, we didn't take money out of the trust fund, we just quit funding, not put money into it. You can see the rates were much lower than actually certified, and that's where you get that 650 million savings during this biennium for retirements by paying much lower rates than were certified. And the new rates in the very right are sort of back to where they should have been, the certified rates that the board did in October were still probably higher. So, actually, part of the budget savings of the governor in this upcoming biennium is really, again, not fully funding the certified rates. If you have any questions about that, let me know, if you want more detail. This chart shows you, I'm beginning to show you how healthcare, healthcare, and particularly Medicaid, has really been eating our lunch. It's not just Virginia, it's nationwide. But in Virginia, you can see this, these bars compare the changes in funding from the '06-'08 budget to the introduced, Governor Donald's recently introduced budget for '12-'14. And you'll see that Medicaid spending for this proposed biennium is 2.4 billion more. That makes, you can understand that, healthcare costs, Medicaid utilization, inflation increased rapidly. We also have a lot more debt service, we're using a lot more pay, we're having to pay debt even with low interest rates. We put more, so much, flow so much more debt, we're having to use a lot more money for debt service. But look what's getting hurt, K-12 education. We actually have $1.1 billion in this proposed budget than we did in '06-'08, and higher end, you can see 400 million less. That's one of the reasons why tuition fees are on our state colleges, much less state support, and so they have to make up for it with tuition fees. So, Medicaid's eating our lunch, much more is going to that. Now, we also have to fill the hole, we kept our operating spending in the state of Virginia higher during this recession than we would have otherwise, much higher, because we used one-time revenues, 2.8 billion in appropriated federal fiscal stimulus. That was just like general funds, that was used just like general funds for Medicaid and K-12 in the main, like we talked about VRS. We took almost $800 million out of our rainy day fund to keep our operating expenses higher than we would have. We replaced all our cash with debt, we reduced for capital, we had saved up, we converted to debt, of course, we're paying the piper on that, because our debt service is going to be probably higher going forward. And we did a number of other things to, one time, to keep our operating corporations. So, on this chart, way too much detail, if you look three lines down, you'll see that this budget is showing you we're spending fiscal 13 over 12, that's what the change is. So, if you just focus on that column, you see, for example, debt service, it's 52 million more than last year, that this curve you were in had to spin. And so, that can't be used for programs, that has to be just paid for debt service. So, we're paying the piper, and that's going to, that's accelerating actually, debt service. We have to fund the rainy day fund. Now, instead of using it, we actually have to put money back into it by the Constitution. So, anything above 2% revenue growth in the state of, if the general fund grows, anything more than 2%, half of that growth above 2% goes into the rainy day fund. Again, it can't be used for programs, essentially goes into the bank. You can see also that go down in the middle, where you see K-12, direct aid, there is 219 million more in fiscal 13 and 12, but almost all of it is going to future time, it's not for programs. I'll show you a little more detail in a second. And Medicaid, DMAS, Medicaid, 240 million more, that is after, he's basically, the governor's proposed this, he's going to fund no inflation for Medicaid, for hospitals, providers, personals. So, he made a huge cut in Medicaid in this proposed budget, but we still have to put 240 million more into 180 million the next year above 12, and that doesn't even really count when the new healthcare laws are going to come into play. So, this is what is for local government, this traces what goes back to what our main program. If you look at the very bottom, you'll see that in fiscal '09, 52% of the states are on localities. This proposed budget is going to be in the 44%. That's a huge shift over a very short period of time, smaller pie with less money of that smaller pie on the locality, part of why you're feeling the pressure at the local level, there's just less state support. City of Richmond in more hand in particular, you see, the, this is all funds, this is not just general funds, I included everything, because that's really all you care about, general funds are the bulk of it, but then lottery profits are in here. Lottery profits in total are 435 million statewide out of 10, you know, out of $15 million general funds, so it's relatively minor, but it does go to public ghetto. Then there's a smattering of non-general funds, and then the state appropriated federal stimulus, which was about $650 million in '10 and '11 total, is in those numbers up there. So, even with federal stimulus, you can see you went from 144 million in Richmond, from the state, to 117 million. When you net out the retirement money, it's even worse, you go from 139 million to 111 million. That's That's absolute dollars that you're getting from the state to Richmond City Public Schools. That's quite a cut, that's quite a cut. So, what are the fiscal policy issues this session? Well, the governor did, he cut about three hundred million. Part of his strategy is to save about a billion dollars. Current services budget was, he needed to save a billion dollars over the biennium. And he did it by not funding Medicaid inflation for hospitals and nursing homes. He also did it by taking three hundred million out of policies for current services for K-12. And I'll show you that in a second. So, he saved three hundred million dollars there. So, he basically had to fit the K-12 SOQ re-benchmarking to how much money he had available. So, he came up with three policies to save money. He did this, he did this, which was on the good side, something he did on the good side. The adverse education funds were all fully re-benchmarked. And statewide, the number of free lunch students actually went up dramatically during the recession. So, significant amounts of additional money were needed to fully fund the adverse education funds. Things like K-3's class size reduction, the adverse add-on, the algebra readiness and the early reading programs. They actually got all re-benchmarked fully. So, that was good, that's particularly good. First Cities fights for those. We pay particular attention, and we think we had something to do with that as well. And he actually, the governor's actually made a mistake in not fully funding K-3. You recognize that. He's having to add the bulk of that fifty-eight million is for, in fact, all fifty-eight million for, most of it's for the K-3 classes, but also a new initiative in early reading to fully fund the third grade level of early reading. If they do poorly on SOLs in third grade, then now they get fully funded by the state to get help. And so, that's a good thing. The governor has focused what money he did have on adverse programs. We applaud him for that. They also began to reduce that sixty million clawback, I call it, to fifty million thirteen forty-five. And you'll notice, Richmond, that cost you, sixty million cost you three point three million. So, you can reduce it by half a million or so by going from fifty to forty-five. And so, that's a good thing, too. We wish it would be completely gone. Because First Cities actually disproportionately hurt by that, because you get a larger share of the base of that funding, because they don't count K-12 in the base. They don't count car tax, they count everything else. And First Cities, Richmond in particular, has a larger share of everything else. So, when they use that as the base and they then apply the sixty million, who has to pay it? It hurts First Cities. So, we've been lobbying to get rid of that. And we're seeing, hopefully, some fruits of that. Maybe we can get the General Assembly open for it. They basically continue to level fund HB 599. You can see you get almost fourteen million. And we'd like to see them honor their policy of growing halfway the general fund revenue growth, which is three point three percent, four point five percent. Their own statutory policy says that they should grow by that amount. And so, we're pressing them on that issue. CSA has declined, and they're funding that, they're assuming that decline will continue. We're going to be watching that. He's also proposed a hundred and ten million dollar transfer, we talked about earlier. And that's taken right out of the general fund, which would go approximately half to local. It was back there. So, that's an issue. Street maintenance was, we were happy to see street maintenance got a boost. We weren't sure that was going to happen, and the introduced budget did get a boost. Two percent, three percent, even though the state is struggling with its own system maintenance needs, they gave these street maintenance to cities and towns a boost. We're going to monitor that very closely. I'm sure Kelly will tell you that. Transit funding was flatlined despite increasing costs. And then, of course, the General Assembly has taken a swipe at people on MNT, and they've got bills in to do that. For example, MNT, Delegate Perk, chairman of House Finance, got a bill into the same first three years. And that's actually, since it's, most localities have a declining scale assessments, that hurts, that particularly hurts us for three years. So, those are some of the issues. These are what was embedded. These are the two big policies, two of the biggest policies that he proposed to reduce K-12 funding to the tune of a hundred million a year, two hundred million over the biennium. There was a couple more that hit Northern Virginia only. So, we're not looking at that for Richmond. But these two, you can see that you don't get disproportionately, or Cities doesn't get disproportionately, because it's basically a basic aid issue. And you're getting cut by your share, basically, as opposed to, you get much larger shares in adverse funding. So, you're not getting disproportionate cut with these proposals. But you can see it's a million dollars per proposal per year if they adopt it for the city of Richmond. Now, this, he also made a change in pre-K. And what was, it was a mass confusion about pre-K. The funding dollars were actually a cut. What he did was he proposed a change to how you count four-year-olds from an estimate, a population estimate that VFC has, to using kindergarten as a proxy for the number of four-year-olds. The kindergarten population would be the proxy. And he did that because it saved about thirty million dollars going forward from what the potential number of slots could be. But even that doesn't mean you actually would have filled all the slots. And I highlighted Richmond. So, the way, it's a complicated slide. I'm sorry, it was the only way I could really kind of do it to get everything on page. But if he would have kept everything the same, Richmond would have had fifteen hundred slots. It could have potentially used, I mean, it's a volatile world, you wouldn't have had to use it all. What you're going to get is the new policy of 991, which is still more than what you got occupied this year, which is 882. So, that's why I'm not sure it would have gone from eight eighty-two to fifteen hundred. You know, you're still going to have some growth. So, the one point eight million is, I term it potential. It's probably, every locality is going to be different, because there's a whole harmless in there. And that's, it gets complicated. So, he cut a potential amount, thirty million, out of pre-K. He actually funded five million more than what's being funded this year. So, it's very complicated. But there is a policy change of using kindergarten. We have to think about how we're going to play that. First Cities would actually like to see the per pupil amount increase. And if that stayed the same for years, six thousand, that's each pupil gets six thousand, shared between state local by your composite index. We'd like to see that index. We think that would be maybe a better policy in the institute. This slide shows you how the First Cities could take out any benefits from the adverse programs. So, if you look at twelve, that's what Richmond's getting, twelve point one million from the programs I listed at the bottom, five major ones. In the introduced budget, it's thirteen point two million. And that doesn't even include the executive amendment to increase the K-3 with that mistake he made. So, it would be more than that. So, that's actually a pretty good increase, nine point five, plus even more if they adopt the executive amendment. You can see at the bottom how VFC gets thirty-one percent of those five adverse programs. That is why we focus on them so dearly. It's because instead of getting twelve percent of the state's basic A, VFC, you know, in total, you get these targeted programs, you get a third of your money. So, it's very important to protect them and enhance them. And I might let Kelly talk about, talk about enhanced slots.
You know, over the last several years, Virginia First Cities has done a lot of things that have been beneficial to Richmond and all of our members. This is just a small sampling that we want to go, just so you kind of know what kinds of things we are doing. And as Jim has mentioned just recently, the adverse education piece is a major piece for us. Now, I know that this is city council, I understand that. And that the school board is, you know, the school board. But money, as Jim always says to me, money is fungible. If you get money in one area, that affects the other area. So, understand, and I know you all care about education, I know that's important, but just keep in mind that money is fungible. And when you get resources on one side, it helps you on the other side, okay? So, just to let you know, as an example, in 2010, the 2010 session, we fought, we led the fight to include a whole harmless provision for the composite index changes. And I know you all know about that big issue, the local composite index. It was like a hundred and, I think, we ended up getting an additional hundred and forty million dollars in the first year, and maybe, I think we got about half of that in the second year. But Virginia First Cities, because we are small, because we're not this huge, you know, statewide organization, we can focus, and we led that charge. And when others weren't interested in that charge, but we did lead it, and we did a lot of good work, and we're very proud that, because it saved Richmond of, you know, ten million dollars the first year and four million dollars the second year. Additionally, there was another proposal that we're looking at having to work against, possibly this year, which is a block granting of adverse funding. The House appropriations had tried to push to block grant adverse funding for education. And what that would do, basically, is it would redistribute the money based on school membership, AEDM, instead of based on free lunch. So, that hurts tremendously. So, we did lead that effort, and Delegate McClellan was very vocal. We worked with her on that, and that was defeated. And that would cost you six point nine million dollars. Eliminated a Title I deduction in the Virginia preschool initiative program. Also, as Jim was talking about earlier, one of our priorities is we're trying to increase the per child payment over six thousand. Now, right now, it's six thousand, it's been there since about 2005. We pushed to get it to that point in about 2000, yeah, about 2005. So, we're hoping to increase that as well. And then also, we've been looking at the arbitrary eight percent reduction in the adverse and our program. Another item that isn't here that I should have mentioned was street maintenance funding. And as you all know, street maintenance funding is only given to the, you know, cities and a couple of, a couple of counties. The street maintenance funding is how you all take care of your, it's not up there, I'm sorry. Is that, oh, okay, here we go, yeah. VFC is to develop a change, okay, the street maintenance payment policy. You look at this chart, I love this chart. Look at Richmond, there we go. And this happened in 2002. But in 2002, Richmond was getting sixteen point eight million dollars a year for street maintenance. And really, Jim has been with us this long, but Jim actually identified that the money that was going to, that was going to veto for maintaining the highways and the county roads was increasing by a greater percentage. And ours was staying flat. So, when we identified this, we went to the General Assembly, we went to both, you know, money people, and they said, you know, we should do something about that. Well, that has changed. So, you see Richmond getting six point eight FY02. If you use the previous policy, you stay with the old way, you'd be getting about eighteen point three million dollars. Well, actually, now you're getting twenty-two point six million, which is an annual difference of four point two million. And this is, this is all for Virginia First Cities. But I just want you to understand, we are very valuable in changing legislation, but also changing funding policies. And we, you know, scour the budget to look for opportunities. And that was a great opportunity. So, it is very important to us that street maintenance funding, you know, receives what it needs. And we're keeping our eyes on it. Let's go to the next page. VFC budget amendments that we have put in for the 2012 session. And most of these are education-related. But as Jim mentioned, you know, the governor has a new initiative, and he's basically going to fully fund the early reading program in adverse education. That is convinced. We met with the governor's office back in November and emphasized this. J. Mark just did a study last September on the importance of third grade reading and how it makes a difference in the success rate of our students and the impact that it does have. So, we decided to emphasize K, early reading, third grade reading. And that's what you'll see here. Basically, the first one is funding the state share of literacy coaches in elementary schools statewide. It's a thirty-four million dollar budget request, but, I say that but, because you know how tough the budget is. But it's something that is very necessary. This is a best practice that J. Mark has identified. Literacy coaches are the ones that would teach the teachers how to help our students that are struggling in third grade. The next one is fund the state share of reading specialist coaches in elementary schools. The reading specialists work directly with the students. Now, at this point, you know, our schools do have reading specialists. This policy, it was a policy that was adopted by the Board of Education to actually fund reading specialists, but it has not been funded by the General Assembly. They understand the value. The Board of Education says we need to do this, but they just have not done it. The local governments are doing it now, and we think that they should recognize that. We're also asking, we're asking thirty-six million dollars, but it could be targeted to a pilot, as a pilot project, to the schools with the lowest grade, with the lowest grades, et cetera. So, that's something that we're working on. And then, another item is reinstating enrollment loss funding that was suspended in the 2010 General Assembly session. And what that is, is it's funding that the state gives to schools, basically, gave to schools that are losing enrollment. And Richmond is one of those, and has been. Right now, we're hoping that that will be funded.
It's probably twelve million, or seven million.
Right, it's twenty million dollars total over the biennium. And then, another item that's really of cost savings is to eliminate third grade science and history SOL tests. It would save about two million dollars per year. And our thought is that maybe that, maybe that extra money can go to some of these other efforts. But the thought is that, you know, children need to be really focused on reading in the third grade, and the science and history, while the curriculum will stay, the testing doesn't have to occur until like the fifth grade. The next one is re-benchmarking the per pupil payment for the Virginia preschool initiative program that Jim mentioned earlier. And then, the last one that we put in as a budget request is enterprise zones. And enterprise zones have been a really important piece for us over the last several years. We advocated, we actually were able to get three million dollars put into the budget last year for enterprise zones. Richmond has enterprise zones, as you know, all across the city. But last year, for the first time, all the funds were not expended. And I think it has to do with the recession, you know? That some businesses just did not use some of those funds. So, what they did was they cut the budget by three million dollars. The governor cut the three million dollars that we fought so hard to get in. Well, one and a half to, one and a half. Yeah, okay, one and a half, one and a half. I think that, yeah. But they did cut that money, and what we've done is we put in a budget that any funds that are unexpended should be used for revitalization efforts. Because, as you know, revitalization is extremely important to us. So, those are all budget amendments that we put in. We didn't put in any bills this year, but we certainly are tracking and following a lot of those that are important to you. And just to let you know, if you didn't hear yet, your receivership bill did pass the subcommittee this morning at 7:00 a.m., and we were there to support it. So, that bill has gone through the first step. Thanks.
Well, we're almost done. No, this is long. I love this last slide here, it's just to show you that we're, VML and Virginia First Cities is starting to beat law MNT because it's important to Richmond. And there are efforts to reduce those, or not ultimately eliminate those two taxes. I know that VML relatively believes that they're going to do something if they need to replace the revenue, somehow, for revenue, so. Just highlights that issue. It's going to be another big issue with the General Assembly this year. And then, the last was dependencies. If anyone's interested in how your composite wire changed, there's a slide in there. And then, about House and the other, we'll see what Calis announced, the budgets just occurred. So, I hope we didn't take too much of your time, and if, for the book, I'm sure we have any questions.
Absolutely, this is a good use of your time. And we really do appreciate you coming to, coming in and giving us that information. If that information is available, that's electronically, where we can have a copy of that, and we have some of that, so that we can take time to really review that, it's going to be extremely helpful to us as we go through that budget process and looking at where are those, sort of areas of cuts from the state level. Also, it'll help us tremendously when we go across to legislators and know what budget needs to be on the task force. And especially, we want to thank you for the time and the particular input into addressing issues that faces the cities within the Congress. And some of the efforts. the issues that faces the cities within the Congress and some of the efforts that we've been very successful with, the holding office for any response and other type of budget items that are there. And I know personally that you've been very hard with and successful in this and attention drawn to some things that otherwise wouldn't have been done. And we hope that we can work much closer with you throughout the year and the Chinese community so that we can stop thinking and preparing the budget limits and papers and legislation that we need to be prepared for. The rest is going to be a little bit tighter scheduled than we did this time of year as well. Any questions, members of the community regarding the information that was presented? I will try to receive their reporting, probably get some questions, so I must be happy to say that.
Detective Director.
My pleasure, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the board for, I think it's on board, Madam Chair, I want to call that at the end of the meeting, which we will have to, I'll come back to that. We'll start with the first item, this is on Virginia. Item number one, order number 2011-137, to amend 2908 West Periphery on Real Property Taxation for 2012 and all subsequent tax years contingent on the continued use of the property at a earlier foundation.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair. I am adjunct with your certainly members, Mr. Samuels. We have a link in the discussion with the help of City Assessor. I think we realize that out of a long list of nonprofits owning their own properties, there was a new number of those who were actually qualified for this tax. I think what we wound up coming up with would be item number eight, in which we would eliminate the moratorium, or repeal the moratorium on tax incentive properties and not correct the rules, we would do these case by case.
I just feel, at that time, what I'd like to do is move to agenda item number eight and become a one in the whole until, my understanding is that if we move paper number eight forward, we will recommend writing paper number one separately.
Well, I just need instruction on how to go forward from there. Would we need to reintroduce the paper number four or the earlier?
No, I think we reopen this process back up, then the earlier and any other nonprofit that is seeking tax exemption, which is through the normal process, is putting the application for such.
Which is through the assessor's office or through what we, how does that work? How do we...
The interesting question, just sort of getting that to Mr. Jewell, my question is going to be, if we pass this paper, are we going to go back to the same process that we had, acquire two moratoriums that we put on? I think you could answer Mr. Jewell's question as to how the assessor's office was involved, including one or two council members. There was a process that you would go through.
Well, that moratorium was put on June 4th, so I don't know what that process is, and that's what I'm asking.
The moratorium is put on a few years ago. But that's not the question we're asking. The question we're asking is, what is the application process that one goes through? We opened it back up, we will go through the normal application process and...
And it is determined by the assessor or is it determined by the council?
It is, it is a, I don't know, the assessor. Could you help us out, Mr. Assessor, with the process, because I don't want to give you misinformation. I'm sure I was hip a step and someone much smarter than I am will, if they clear yourself. If you help me out.
Madam Chair, excuse the casual dress. Your question, Mr. Jewell?
Well, we said that if we repealed the moratorium, that we would return to the previous process. What is that process? I don't know.
It's a split process. An exemption from local real estate taxes comes from one of two sources. It comes by what we call classification, which generally means you're allowed that exemption under some statutory guideline. He's just wanting to describe that category as churches. Churches that are exempt under certain conditions. The other side of it is an exemption by designation. Designation is an exemption that is allowed locally within locality, and it's an exemption request that's not addressed in the statutes.
So it could be, an example would be historic or...
It could be a drug rehabilitation program that operates only in Richmond. And that process was closed in 2007, it'll be five years. So we have not been accepting applications for designation issues, and we have an ordinance that repeals it, that places the moratorium in place, and I think the effort here is to repeal that ordinance and open the designation process back up. That does not guarantee an exemption. It just allows people to go to the process to see if in fact they do qualify.
That's my concern. If council appears is now taken out of the process, and does that jeopardize the chances of exemption going back to the previous process? I'm trying to understand.
There are statutory guidelines for an exemption by designation. If they go through the process and go before your committee that you'll have to appoint, and they make their case and you agree with it, then you essentially vote to make them eligible for exemption.
And we would, the council would then have to reestablish what criteria goes into the designations?
Criteria is written in statute.
Already there?
Guidelines are all there. All you have to do is appoint a committee, which consists of staff, a council member and one or two citizens, I forget to make up. And then they have to operate under the appropriate guidelines. If they get an exemption because they're doing nonprofit uses and suddenly they're renting the property out, or somehow establish an income base on that property, then that's when the assessor would step in, reevaluate it, let council know that they're probably not following the guidelines, so they get the exemption.
Well, that's, that leaves me a little wondering, because I don't know whether we're advantaging or disavenging the chances of them being exempted. They were losing life and they sold to a foundation, a foundation that owns, they are tax exempted, but they have to generate revenue. And so I don't know enough, but it appears that they may be leasing it out to an operator, I'm not sure. So I'm not sure whether I'm prejudicing this whole thing or not.
All right, yeah. The reason why I wanted to give you the benefit of the opportunity of us entertaining paper number eight prior to paper number one is for that decision to be made and ultimately we can make a decision as to whether or not we want us to also make a decision on paper number one or whether we want to strike it. But if, there's no way that we are going to be able to make a determination of their eligibility or qualification even under the application process until they go through that process. There is no guarantee that they would. So particularly for this one, particular this, so with that, then we can, if what I was thinking was going to help make a decision for you to strike paper number one, to go on to take paper number eight first, I'm willing to do that if that would help you in this process.
Well, I'm still trying to understand paper number eight and...
Can I understand what?
Paper number eight.
Okay.
And the implications of paper number eight.
All right, well, we'll call, we can call on paper number eight is what I'm asking, if you want to keep it through this without the process approved forward. Otherwise, we can entertain number one in the absence of that.
I'm trying to learn from the assessor.
All right, well, let's...
Well, wait a minute, let me ask a question.
I'm going to call on paper number eight, Mr. Jewell, so we can deal with paper number eight.
Oh, all right.
So Madam Chair, what we do is one in the whole and paper one now moves to paper eight.
Item number eight, order number 2012-1, to appeal city code and time of the moratorium on the acceptance of applications for tax exemptions by designation and designation, with the purpose of authorizing the city assessor to accept applications for tax exemptions and to extend the deadline to the deadline, the filing deadline, to March 1st, 2012, but applicable to the tax year beginning January 1, 2012, with the purpose of temporarily permitting the filing acceptance of applications that papers before the committee.
And Mr. Cowell and Mr. Samuels, on the occasions of this paper, so who would like to speak to the clarification of what the intent of this paper, or what is the character of this paper, so that we can perform the discussion? You don't think anything? Mr. Cowell will go first.
Sure.
All right.
It's our turn to go back to the process that was in place that we repealed approximately five years ago, where nonprofit organizations petitioned the city to receive benefit of tax exemptions, following the guidelines as established by the Virginia Code, the Virginia ordinances that we have, Virginia Code is correct, and the city of Richmond ordinances. We believe that is the fairest way to handle all these situations, as opposed to handling it one by one basis. Process in the past, there was a certain timeframe, November, December, where all the nonprofits applied, and then the benefit was received the next year. Because we passed the November/December discussion, we have made a minor revision here to basically allow for extension of filing deadline for this year. That's what we were trying to achieve. Now, I would like, at the committee meeting where we talk about this, we will not talk about the composition of the folks of all of us and starting this conversation about that. Do we have that information?
I guess the question, we're looking back at the ones here from the city attorney's office, that gave the data information as to the proposition that would, that is warranted by the council to review these applications.
Why she's looking, my recollection is, is that we received a litany of nonprofits that paid forward in 2007, and basically, we approved all of those, that's my recollection. And then the moratorium didn't play, that was five plus years ago, so I could be off on that statement. You know, that's my recollection.
Madam Chair, to Mr. Richmond's city attorney's office, in terms of the composition of the tax exemption by designation committee, my guess would be that the composition that committee would be covered in the city ordinance. However, I haven't had an opportunity to look to find that particular composition that I can certainly provide to you before the end of the meeting to, you know, go back.
And I, you know, I don't remember exactly, but I do know that the local council representative could have supported the review committee of all the applications. And I think there were a few real estate experts on it. Well, we, we all, we all fully, just official information, that's a good spread. But the process is that once the application goes in, this review committee would ultimately make the recommendation of approval for the exemption. I guess the question that I think Mr. Jewell was asking is, does it come back to the council for official approval, or is the committee's approval, unless the committee votes this up, then this entity would automatically, under this paper, because of the exemption of the deadline, we would have to go for that eventually for the provision here, for this one time.
Right. Unlike the car, that has an appeals process that runs up here to the council, is that right?
Yeah, I agree.
And the process, I think we might continue these papers. I didn't want to...
No, no, Madam Chair, I don't want to continue these papers because we have some deadlines here to deal with the budget. Folks need to have, understand the implications of it. My suggestion is that the city attorney takes a few minutes, pulls some proper ordinances, brings them back to us, and we can have dialogue on this matter. And I would really appreciate it if we could do that.
Madam Chair?
Education is more convenient. Yeah, I would quit.
Madam Chair, I do have information regarding the composition of the tax exemption by designation committee. It's covered in section IDHS 248 of the city code. Subsection one of that section provides that the tax exemption by designation committee shall consist of at least, at least five members who shall each serve a three-year term and be familiar with one or more of the following areas. Number one, nonprofit organizations, accounting, finance, property and property assessors. It says that at least one member of the committee shall be an employee either of the city assessors' office or the Department of Finance. However, such employees shall comprise no more than two-fifths of the members of the property of the tax exemption by designation committee.
Okay, and the question that Mr. Jewell asked as it relates to this appeal process, if this committee's recommendation, if the applicant would like to appeal the decision of the review committees, that the provision was included?
My understanding of the way the process works is that the committee makes a determination as to which organization should receive the exemption, and there are some deadlines set forth in the ordinance to provide, when the committee has to make that decision. After the committee makes its recommendation as to whether the council should approve or deny an application, an ordinance will be, should be introduced and scheduled for a public hearing by no later than March 15th of each year.
Does it only work?
Just trying to tell you.
And, so my only other question, sorry.
Mr. Jewell?
So my only other question is, I've heard examples, i.e. church, on one side, but on the designations, what are possible designation categories? Do you have that?
Designation categories are based on, again, it's in the city ordinance that provides. Basically, the organization must be a charitable, must be a nonprofit organization, that's one of the requirements set forth for exemption by designation, which is, I think, what we are mainly focused on right now. which is, I think, what we are mainly focused on right now. The committee obviously would have to look at whether the organization, there are some provisions in the state code that the committee would have to consider, the council would have to consider, whether the organization has any discriminatory practice and things of that nature. But the crux of what's going to determine whether or not they're exempt by designation would be their purpose, whether it's a religious, charitable, benevolent, cultural purpose, that kind of thing. And it's somewhat raw because it's intended to cover the scope of the types of organizations that may actually qualify for the exemption.
Well, I just heard Mr. Hester, Madam Chair, give an example of a nonprofit organization who might be owning the building but renting it out that might jeopardize their exemption. They rent it out in order to pay the mortgage. And so, if that's not an acceptable designation, then this thing is doomed from the very beginning. So, help me understand, well, are we prejudicing this thing or not?
Can you, can you, can you restate your question?
I'm sorry?
Could you restate that?
Restate your question.
Uh, I'm... Are we prejudicing the effort that this whole thing is intended for, which is to bury the theater to be exempt for real estate taxes in order to live or get may die? And they are a nonprofit foundation who has to rent this place out in order to pay the mortgage.
To whom do they work for this?
Mr. Samuel.
There's an operator that actually runs the theater that is separate from the foundation. And so, if that's not an acceptable arrangement, then this baby is doomed to begin with.
All right, so your question is specifically to one organization and their particular means of operation as to whether or not they would be eligible.
Right.
And what I, I think the answer to that question, Mr. Jewell, is that there is an existing process, application process, with annual records, their tax exemption status, whether or not they fall within the classification has to be determined through this, through this process. And also, there's a review that will determine whether or not any particular organization that's making application qualifies or not. I respect the fact that you're particularly interested in one organization.
Right.
And wanting to know that this organization, that this legislation provides an opportunity for them to be qualified for that. But I, I don't think that anyone would be in a position to give you an answer to that.
No, I think Mr. Hester just said something, unless I misheard him. I'd like him to help us out on this.
Mr. Jewell, you would ask Mr. Hester your specific question so we can try and answer. Mr. Hester?
I thought I heard you, Mr. Hester, make, give an example just a moment ago, that if a nonprofit is leasing out a property, that that might disqualify them for a tax exemption. Did I hear that?
The condition of exemption under designation process is that they're using it for their purposes. So, it's a broader question than just leasing it out. If they're, if they're not using it for their purposes, then they may not have, be entitled to an exemption. One of the examples, they could be vacant. If it's sitting vacant, under no use whatsoever, that would disqualify them from a designation exemption.
This one? Yeah.
If they're leasing it to another entity for income, I don't know where that would go, but it raises another question that has to be investigated. If they're allowing other organizations into their building for reasons other than their stated purpose, we would have to look at the income and the frequency of it.
So, it's not an automatic disqualification or there's an element of...
We really go to the net result, are they making income or profit?
Yeah.
If they're using it, if they're having weddings in there and that money is used to offset expenses and there's no, that operating income of any substantial nature created, the problem won't be an issue.
Thank you, Mr. Hester, appreciate that. Mr. Toward?
Before Mr. Hester, please.
Please.
Mr. Hester, I think this was clear enough a little bit. We're dealing, well, the reality of the situation is, is if I'm leasing a property for a dollar, that's one conversation.
I'm leasing it for a dollar. How you doing?
For, you know, ten dollars a square foot per year, then it's another discussion. And that would be some of the mitigating factors that you would have to weigh on this, what this entity is doing. Best example I have is a church, a church that had a building used for educational purposes. And one year, they decided to run out the upper floor of that facility to all nonprofit organizations. And they charge full rent and a complete market rate rents for that property. That, at this point, they have given their exemption on that use of that real estate. But if, but if that organization, if that church decided not to charge anything at market rate but a dollar, just to have an agreement between the two parties, you would look at it differently.
That's true.
So, that's kind of where I think we are with this. It's going to be a question, is, is nonprofit organization receiving a large benefit for leasing this property? But you did bring up something interesting, and I didn't realize it's not. If you say if you have a vacant property, the exemption goes away. Okay.
Almost all exemptions are tied to a use. The exceptions to that are the federal city and city of the province. So, but anything below that has to be placed in that exempted use or...
And then you would look at it in a market condition. You would go out and make an assessment of the property, so which part would you do normally in the process?
We keep that assessment anyway, just yet to become taxable.
Okay, all right, that's very helpful, I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam.
Okay, well, with that, Madam Chair, which you called, we have called on paper number eight. So, we can have a public hearing on it. Okay, you all know how, a public hearing on item number eight. Is there any person here that would like to speak and support or opposition to this paper? CNN, I took a reading.
Can you ask a question? Number eight.
Ask a question?
Yes.
I just, on this paper, there is no, you don't have any talk in this paper. There's no women on what the property is for. Are you generally a non-lease property? Or is it?
No, Madam Chair, I got to answer the question. We've had a long, winding road on this one. Because approximately two years ago, I did introduce an ordinance that would have put a ceiling for our capital. And what I was hoping to do is allow nonprofit organizations to have up to a litany of dollars of real estate until before they start paying taxes and taxes. We, in fact, know that jurisdiction has that or does that. But upon investigation, I learned that the General Code does not allow that. And in order to have it done, we have to, one, have the General Assembly alter, break, modify the code. And because of the section of the code that Mr. Allen or others are more legally oriented to want to speak. My understanding is because of the section of the code this is in, it would have to be ratified by two separate General Assemblies. Then ultimately, it would have to be placed on a referendum to the board of some agenda. I think I got a better chance of winning the lottery tonight than of getting that through the process. But that was my understanding of where this is landing. So, when Mr. Jewell, in his infinite wisdom, introduced this ordinance on one particular property, it set up the dialogue that potentially we would be handling these things every week. And city council would call every one of our constituents with a special need coming forward. So, it became very obvious to me, and I think others, that we had a process in place, it worked, it was very, it followed the code. Everything was in place except for the fact that we had struggled. So, we decided, the papers were decided that it would be in our best interest to just bring it back where it was. So, that's kind of how we got here. And I'm, you know, my first choice is to do the partial exemption. Unfortunately, we can't do that, and so I'm prepared to go forward with this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is that a motion for...
Well... Well, I'll make a motion, ridiculous. I'm sorry, I apologize, I missed that.
Yes. Is that correct? Yes, we did, yes. Uh, so, my motion second. So, was there a motion?
Yes, I made a motion for committee to move forward.
Okay, I have a question. All right, you're now voting on Mr. Toward's motion to forward a recommendation to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
All in opposition?
Very good. Yes, we would.
Okay. So, that paper will be forwarded with a recommendation to approve. All right, item number one, Mr. Jewell.
Uh, it seems that though some of the...
We did that paper, yeah, by a privilege.
Okay. Yeah, we did read it and I'll read it again, though. Item number one, order number two thousand and eleven forty-seven, to examine twenty-nine oh eight West Caris Street from Real Property Typhus from the two thousand and twelve, all subject to the tax years, intended on the continued use of the property by the Burn Theater Foundation.
It, it would seem that some fog has been lifted, but the fog a bit resistant lifted. I'm not so sure that I'm calling for fully a prize of popular right now. I'd like to continue with, if I may, Madam Chair, and see if I can stop this thing. I heard, I heard what Mr. Hester said.
Can we get a motion to continue paper number one? At the request of the patient. Mr. Samuel?
At the request of the patient, sir.
Mr. Toward, would you second that motion?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, okay, you're now voting on a recommendation to continue. Item number one, all in support? All right. That paper will be forwarded with a recommendation to continue for thirty days. All right.
I agree with you.
All right, Madam Chair, thank you, Mr. Jewell. We take it up with the commitment of the time. Only because we care, huh? Only because we care. All right, who's called paper number four and five together, please?
Okay, item number four, order number two thousand and eleven two oh one, to execute a goods and services contract between the city and Harris and Harris Limited Collection Agency Services. Item number five, order number two thousand eleven two oh two, to execute a goods and services contract between the city and Processional Recovery Consultants Incorporated Collection Agency Services. Those two papers are forwarded to the committee.
Someone from the administration to press these papers?
Madam Chair, Bill Hill of the finance. These papers are, we all, for us to retain services of collection agencies to assist with the collection of the linked taxes for all tax, all tax types.
And there's a difference in which taxes are collected by each agency, correct?
The intent is that one group would, specifically on two oh one, Harris and Harris, they would be, provide services in their expertise, which was the linked parking tickets, and also with help for personal property taxes. And on paper two oh two, professional consulting services, that they would also help with personal property taxes and real estate.
All right, any questions? Mr. Toward?
Do you, are either one of these organizations located in the city?
Are any of these organizations, they both are, the home offices are outside the city. There's an intent that they would establish an office here in the city of Richmond.
And it would employ, do you know, how many, do you know how many people would employ one, two, three?
Um, they employ in excess of fifty people.
Each? In the city?
Outside the city, how many would, you asked me how many would be inside the city?
In the city, would we have like a one-person office kind of deal? Is that what we're thinking?
Uh, we're thinking there'd be at least three to four people for office.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Jewell?
May I ask, are these companies replacing existing companies? Are we doing this in house therapy or how's this working?
Uh, we do not have an existing company. The contract, that company no longer provided services as of December thirty-first, two thousand and eleven. Currently, we're, we're doing some of this work in-house.
But we had been using outside contact services?
Yes, sir.
Any of those companies local?
I'm sorry?
Any of these, any of those companies local?
Were any of those companies local? Uh, they, they had offices here in the city of Richmond, the home base is not here.
No.
Mr. Toward?
Yeah, I'm just... Madam, sir, do you say so?
The, the contract has expired December of two thousand and ten.
Okay, thank you. I think one of the reasons why, so you understand why I'm asking the question. In the past, with these collection agencies, I get the constituent, I'm sure all of us do, get the constituent saying, I got a nasty grant from this organization. I may try to make a phone call to taxes for ten oh two, and I got some current person on the other side of the line, et cetera, et cetera. And my hope is by having someone here in Richmond, that the citizen would be able to work with that individual in a, in a collaborative way as opposed to the way that the others were being handled. And I, you know, I'm very glad the administration is looking at having a person in the city, having someone that the individuals can talk to. Because I, I really don't like having to get in the middle of a tax collection issue, particularly when the person is out of town. So, this is why I was asking about this. I think it's a customer service conversation. It's too big of a line. I concur with that.
All right. Um, thank you, sir. I'd like to have a little... Look at how we public here in item number four and item number five. Is there any persons here who would like to speak in support or opposition to these two papers? CNN, back to committee. Full discussion, full motion?
Motion.
Mr. Toward? What's your view?
Good, sir. I have one of the things that, before we run, the second motion.
Same to you.
There are some folks that are going to save business in the city out of this. There's two places out of one, two, three, four, five for the business that's based around a burn that receives some printing services here in the city, basically. Makes me come for actual folks that live and work in town. And then for the Chicago and Illinois one, I've forgotten how many, but it's a lower number, I think it's zero. This is a real concern for me. I understand that the chairman can't wait a proposal based on locality or location of business. But this will not bring any money into any business in the city, which is something too. Fifteen to twenty percent of the unpaid real estate personal property taxes, what they anticipate each year coming. So, that's a substantial portion of money that will be going outside of the city. It's great in a way for the city to have a collections agency, because we will be able to get some extra money that we couldn't get otherwise for a fee. That money, who, goes to Chicago. It's essential of having a target anywhere for it. The money's not speaking in the town. I'm not in favor of these papers, so I can't second because of that.
Um, I'll second the motion. You're now voting on Mr. Towles' motion to approve item number four and item number five, all in favor?
Aye.
All in support? All in opposition?
No.
That paper will, those, both of those papers will be forwarded with a recommendation to approve. All right. Um, Matt, would you call paper number seven, please? All right. Item number seven, orders from two thousand and one. Six and item number seven. Okay. Item number six, orders from two thousand and eleven, one twelve, to execute a project agreement they used to send the city and the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Excitation, with a purpose of receiving sixty-two thousand seven hundred dollars to apply housing improvements at Main Street Station.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Ed, to the Department of Economic and Community Development. This is a companion paper to a paper that was passed by city council on January the ninth, and that paper was to accept and appropriate the funding. This paper is to authorize the C A O to enter into the agreement with Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation for the funding. The funding is state matched with federal funding, about two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars that we already have other contract.
Thank you, Ed.
Yes. I didn't see it in the first paper, and I don't see anything with it. What does this money actively go to?
This money will go towards phase three, and it is to go into a grant that we received from the federal government under the safety leave program. So, it will actually be going for the architectural and engineering services for phase three.
That's, that's what I'm.
Any other questions?
An unrelated question, but related to the station. Where are we with, I mean, I'm in favor of going forward, so please understand. But one of the good dogs that we have is the track that serves our station. And God knows, as much as we want to make this station the best thing in the world, if we don't have a track to the station, it kind of gets old. And so, why are you here? If you don't mind, if you could just kind of say a few words on where we are in the process of proving rail?
Yeah, the, um, I've been on this for about twenty years now. Sorry to say. The arrangements that were made twenty years ago was that it's the city's responsibility to make improvements to Main Street Station, which we found to be our responsibilities. The state has a responsibility to negotiate with Amtrak to get the fund, or excuse me, C S X, the railroads, and to get the tracks in place. Studies have to be done before any federal funding can be released for this. The main corridor that we're, we're interested in is Richmond to the north, which goes throughout the yard, and Richmond to the south. The tier-two study was, is underway, and that funding for that, which is about sixty-two million, I believe, was funded through the federal government. So, that is underway. We're doing everything that we can, and they are doing everything that they can to do that, so that when the funding, when it's completed, then it will be ready for funding. The fact that we are so close to the northeast corridor, and that is in the, in Washington, D.C., is one of the biggest benefits that we have to secure that funding. All, all the planning for the southeast high-speed rail, all of that, every single planning effort that's been going on for twenty years has it coming into Main Street Station. So, there's no way that they can change that or deviate that thing. The work that we're going to be doing on phase three, and we get Jamie Welder in here to explain what we're doing, is very, very exciting. We presented it to city planning commission this week. Um, that will reserve the window of rail needs that have to be at the station for the tracks and the platforms. So, what we're doing is developing and securing the building and, and using the alternate space that will be in there, and we'll be coming back to you with a proposal on that. So, you know, there was the announcement of the, the new service from Norfolk coming up. That really is a service from Norfolk to Washington, D.C., through Henrico. It will not be going through the Main Street Station. It's taking the western alignment because those track improvements have not been made on that corridor. We'll be persistent.
Okay, one hour public hearing on item number six, there's one here that would like to speak and support or opposition? Seeing now back to committee.
So, Bill, say.
Okay, you're now voting on Mr. Towles' motion to approve, but a recommendation to approve item number six, all in support?
Aye.
Opposition? That paper will be forwarded with a recommendation to approve. Number seven? Number seven. Item number seven, orders from two thousand and eleven, two fourteen, to offset that task from the Virginia Commission, with the odds of the purpose of providing grants of twenty-five hundred to the Richmond Boys Choir and the seventeen oh eight gallery.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. And you, as a committee, great parents to the budget of our city. Uh, this is a paper where pretty much annually, the state does a challenge for arts frame to various localities, and we apply every year, and we get it every year. And this simply is accepting that money and appropriate to honor our approach to go forth to these two arts organizations.
Questions? No questions? No questions? Thank you very much. One hour public hearing on item number seven, anyone here to speak and support or opposition? Seeing now back to committee for a motion?
So, Bill, say.
You're now voting on Mr. Towles' motion to approve, all in support? Aye.
Aye.
I think that paper will be forwarded with a recommendation to approve. All right. Number ten? Resolution over two thousand and eleven, R one oh five, to approve a timeline on critical milestones leading up to the adoption of the city's fiscal year two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen budget.
Ms. Jones, we have been working with the administration in creating that timeline. We made a decision previously as to the date that the budget was due, and there were some other self-reliant, we did some other processes that has been presented to the committee that have made the changes to that timeline.
What you have in your supplement package on page twelve is, through thirteen is what we are proposing for that drill down version of that timeline. We actually had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Harris from the budget department, as well as Ms. Highfoster from the K O's office, and what you see on pages twelve and thirteen, are both have agreed to, and we have not made any changes to this document since our last meeting.
All right. Committee, if we have any questions from Ms. Jones regarding the timeline as before, was there any other questions? No.
Well, Mr. Towles, with the highest odds, these council budget review sessions were open to all of the council, but the anticipation is that the finance numbers are expected to be here.
That's correct.
And hasn't been a time set?
I need to hear if I'm standing a question, Mr. Jones, so you asking whether time, whether time of the meeting is over the afternoon, the hours, and the start, now, I'm sorry.
I'm just being very, we probably have similar, I mean, our firm's making cases a lot to work with here, so I can't, it was, it was.
As soon as we can, um, from the hours, there's a lot of people scheduled in the process that is to be dealt with as it relates to those times to those committees.
Madam Chair? Mr. Sayers, about?
Yes.
From my schedule perspective, it's better for me to have these committee meetings later in the afternoon as opposed to midday, early morning, and I don't know if you are, that that's what you best promote. How is, how is your schedule?
Can I do the, um, we finished question at the six o'clock?
So, so somewhere if we start three in the afternoon, is that, is that a little over time?
Two, three o'clock would be great. Uh, they just, each year, these are, each year, these intake is actually longer than we anticipated.
Eight.
Instead of the longer, I don't want to give us so long, we're trying to fill the time, but the more time we have, I think the better, the better it is.
All right, cool.
Great. Or they would be the best idea of time.
Other than that, I believe there is, you're, you're-
And I'm fine with that, well, have a conversation.
All right. One hour public hearing on item number ten, is my person here who would like to speak and support or opposition? Seeing now back to committee?
Maybe four, say.
Good. And now voting on Mr. Sam's motion to approve item number ten, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposition? That paper will be forwarded with a recommendation to approve. I'm looking at this right, uh, Matt, in one division. Is it right? Item number two. Orders from two thousand and eleven, one seventy-three, to a man city code for the purpose of providing, the city council shall appoint few as in half of the members of all committees used to evaluate pre-qualification applications, bids or proposals, and pre-qualifying or selecting contractors to provide good services, insurance, and any, or construction to the city, or construction to the city.
As you, you actually continue this paper. You have a potential to hire someone who will be on the staff that may be able to allow me to read this paper, so, once that occurs, I'll be happy to withdraw this paper, but until, as we continue.
All right. Is there a motion?
Take it.
Second.
Say.
You're now voting on Mr. Sam's motion to continue, item number two, all in support?
Aye.
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 I think that paper will be forwarded with a recommendation to continue. And the boards, the senior board? The board, they can say, um, before the committee, the minority business emerging, enterprise and emerging small businesses, the basketball board, council nominations, there's three candidates that all have applied for the head lodge resident appointment. Uh, the committee can make a recommendation also.
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Board. Um, Mr. Rogers, this night, it is certain, uh, he's been persuaded that, um, and I think of the two candidates that were, who, they, uh, has significant more, um, business experience and qualification, I would like to recommend, uh, recommend this mystery, this, I'm not sure, I believe they have to prescribe.
Yes, okay. Committee, all right, three minutes?
Very good.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Jewell.
We, we are considering, you are considering, um, these nominations to the, to buy them all. Maybe I don't have all the paperwork, but first one is Bayore. Think that she's a student, um, and indicates that she's not in business and hopes to be in business one day. How serious is that, uh, that advisor board is, uh, we say that we wouldn't have highest standards in there?
I have a question, I have two questions. Uh, we, we have recommended her as, as Bay. What do you actually recommend that Bay would be, the name of the recommendation from that video?
And I, Madam Chair, I'll be Mr. Honorable.
All right, so, um-
I, I'm going to see that, and I'm just saying, are we considering the other? Miss, Miss Bay?
We, we consider all three of them. Uh, and the recommendation is that, the committee is that we recommend Bay for the seats.
There's just one seat, or there's still a permanent seat?
I'm seeing.
Say.
All right. Um, and that for, um, all three of your sources, yes, yes.
All right. And they will be forwarded, always as sure as available for recommendation. All right. Now, are there any other business? Those are all the items on this seat, so, Jen.
All right. Uh, to the committee, I would just want to remind us, um, that the staff is going to send us the email regards to the unit all three votes. The capital will be, and the recommendation for the use of the, um, front house will be on Monday as a part of the informal, the informal market, or a part of our home. And if you have any questions in regards to the capital or front house, please get that information to the staff so that they can forward that to the administration by Mr. Jones, so they can come.
By noon on Monday?
By noon on Monday. And then maybe-
I would think you're really, I would think you're really hungry tomorrow, but I wasn't necessarily sure.
If we can get it by the close of business tomorrow, we've had some time, we've been asked to do this for quite some time, but we can do this by the close of business so that the administration will have time to answer. If we get it to them at twelve o'clock on Monday, for them to say they don't have the answers would be the appropriate response. So, let's do this by the close of business tomorrow. All right? If there's any other business, any other comments from the committee this committee is adjourned. Thank you, staff, for this.